This is BNN, the Bennington News Network.
Hi, Jeff Grimshaw with BNN and we are here in front of the Bennington Town Offices for a special meeting concerning the Apple Hill Solar Array. Let's get you inside for all the coverage right now.
Good evening, I'm Tom Jacobs. This is a special session of the Board of Selectors. It's August 13th. We have a single item on agenda. The item deals with the matter of solar array off of 279. That's basically before the Public Service Board right now. Unfortunately, I have a professional conflict and I do have to recuse myself in joining you in the audience. And it's a chair that Peter Lawrence is saving for me over there. Before I do that, I do want to indicate that I requested Stu to initiate an ordinance that is consistent with the recently passed law and so we can move on it with expeditious diligence. And I expect that that will be presented to us within the next two weeks. While Homington is out of town, we feel that this is an opportunity that the legislature, thank you Mary, has given us to deal with these applications, having in mind that it's not perfect legislation by any means, but the legislation does give towns authority for screening and other aspects of dealing with placement. So having that, I'm going to recuse myself and offer the opportunity for members to appoint a temporary chairman for the public service.
I'd like to move that we appoint Justin Corker in as acting chair for this evening's meeting.
Certainly.
I can accept a vote on that in discussion? John, you're okay with that?
I'm glad I'm on the chat.
Okay. I, by all favor, signify aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to reserve and come back after the discussion.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. We have called this special meeting to discuss the potential solar development of the Apple Hill area of Bennington. I think it's important to start the meeting out by noting this is not a town of Bennington project and our jurisdiction over the matter is extremely limited and to really alls that we can do is offer suggestions and recommendations to the Public Service Board who has the ultimate authority over this particular instance with any power supply utilities. You know, that being said, tonight, we're here and we're hoping to get some input from town staff and have an opportunity for the board to discuss what input if anything we do want to make to the Public Service Board. After we do that, we will be giving a time for citizens to speak if they wish. We're going to ask that all citizens be concise and to the point about it. There's a lot of folks in the room. I'm sure everybody wants to get a chance to talk. We're going to ask you to keep it to three minutes or less and we'll try and hold it to 30 minutes. So we have it for citizens, so we have an opportunity to discuss and make a good decision here. We're here, you know, to do the best for the town of Bennington tonight, so please just everybody keep that in mind. With that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Stuart and Dan to get an update on where things stand and go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. Basically, I have spoken with Judy Whitney at the PSB. She's one of the docket clerks. She's indicated that there is, at this point, no further hearings been scheduled, that the hearing officer is, in fact, writing his or her decision at the present time, but we still have an opportunity to comment via email so that they will get it quickly and they will pass it on to the hearing officer. As I understand it, the hearing officer's report and recommendation, if you call it that, will go to the Public Service Board itself, who will then vote to accept, modify, or deny the project. But it is late in the process, but we still have an opening in which to issue and make our concerns.
Is there a deadline? What is it? Isn't there some deadline on Tuesday evening?
She could not give me a deadline because it depends on the hearing officer's ability to pull together all of the information, all of the testimonies that they've put into some sort of a format. Her request was she should reply sooner rather than later. Stu, what if any parameters or limitations were out there that the board has with respect to modifications, amelioration, or limiting the installation?
I would say that we have the right, so to speak, to ask for any modifications. We have the right to oppose the project should the board decide to do so. We have the right to simply ask the Public Service Board to follow the laws that are now on the books. There are any, we can do a lot of things formally, but we do not have the authority to block the project. We do not have authority to force the PSB to make changes should it decide not to do so.
It's my understanding thus far, and I would be quite blunt about it, that the PSB has really been given carte blanche with respect to projects like this. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, they are. The sole approval is of the board. You can call it carte blanche, but that is the fact.
So that no matter what we do, if they decide that their concerns of the people of Bennington are not important, then they can go ahead with this?
That's correct.
Donald, do you want to answer my own comments meeting this evening here? I'm sure you have some things you'd like to say on top of it.
Well, Stuart, do you have any other additions you have or you, about where you think we are?
That's about where we're at now.
Can you speak up a little bit? We can't hear you back here. Can you guys speak up a little bit?
Sure. Try it anyway.
That's good.
I tried to understand this project today. Tried to really get my head around it and go through the Public Service Board documents and they're really a tangle. I admire you, all of you that have tried to follow them along the way. I think it's probably worth noting that from the Public Service Board's perspective, this has been, in their mind, a lawful process that has been linear and has been ongoing for some time. So the projects were submitted in March and June, I think, of 2014, and then there were opportunities along the way for public hearings that were held at the firehouse, I guess, and a couple of other opportunities. So they don't, they don't see this as being the first time that the town has been kind of notified of this, but I think our story on this is that we, the planning commission, I know, because I was on the planning commission at the time, talked about this in February 2014, and we asked for, you know, we thought we'd really need quite a lot of screening and kind of assessing the visual impacts. And I believe that that's how we left it, that we would really work towards good screening and good visual impacts with the idea that we would be wanting to protect the historic and highway infrastructure and the other kind of major viewpoints of it. So I think maybe the other night at the select board meeting, I was a little bit surprised to find out that the screening issue hadn't really been resolved. And maybe it has and maybe it hasn't, but it seems like there's quite a lot of uncertainty about it. And I think that at very least would be a good place for the select board to make sure we get our, get our voice in. As I understand it, there's a hearing, a technical hearing on Tuesday at 2:30, and it's complicated by the fact that Monday is a state holiday, so we have a Pink and Battle Day, right, holiday? And so I don't think we can submit our comments on Monday and expect to have them worked in. I'm not sure how that works, but it feels like if we're going to say anything, we almost need to say it tomorrow.
Yes, most.
And I'm not sure if that's the case or not. There may be a way to work with this Tuesday, but it feels like this is a kind of deadline that we probably should really work hard to try to say something by the end of the day tomorrow, if we have something to say.
Now, this hearing on Tuesday is for the certificate of public good, which has been petitioned for.
That's right. So the certificate for public good on the Apple Hill, and Stuart, maybe it'd be worth just pointing out that there are two projects here next to each other. Chelsea is, okay, if you look at Stuart's head, you go to the left, and that's the Chelsea project. And then if you look at the darker blue one that's lower and to the right, that's the Apple Hill project. And they're two separate projects, but they are clearly very physically related. And the one that's on the docket Tuesday is the Apple Hill project, which is the one that is, in my mind anyway, most likely to impact from a scenic point of view, the welcome, the new Welcome Center and possibly the view from the monument and the highway and some other local viewpoints. So I'm giving an opinion here a little bit, which I didn't mean to do, but anyway, so Tuesday, I think, is the day that that will get decided. And I think Stuart described the process after that, that the hearing officer then pulls together the brief and it gets accepted or not accepted by the Public Service Board.
I'd like to, maybe premature on this, but that we as a board direct the town manager to instruct town council to intervene. And I think we need to discuss what intervene means to, I want to say, stop this process, but at least to make sure that we as a town are heard on this with the PSB.
How do you want to do this?
Is anybody else have anything in the board that they'd like to say at the moment before we open up this?
This is 4,000 kilowatts. Is this a, is this the normal size? It seems like a big, a big installation for a rural area like this.
27 acres. It's a big installation.
27 acres, 27 acres is a million 176,120 square feet. Let me, let me use a parallel here. The new Walmart superstore that is going to be coming in is 112,000 square feet. 112,000 square feet, divide that into the 1,176,000, it's like having the equivalent of 10 and 1/2 Walmart superstores, put a one and F for the other, F for the other, F for the other, F for the other. It's sort of a semi-rural location. That's the only parallel I can come up with that is.
I don't know if you know, or maybe you do. What is the benefit with respect to kilowatt hours that would be generated? And furthermore, where does that money go? I know it goes back to the center of Vermont, but who?
Well, I think there are two things. You know, I think we all know that since 2006, the federal government and most states have implemented a series of investment tax credits to cause the building and installation of renewable energy sources, solar, wind, you know, fish power, whatever it is. The investment tax credits constitute 30% of a developer's cost basis for building an installation. So let's say this company, which I think is Allco, A-L-L-C-O-O, out of New York City, ironically, one of the, the officers of Allco was a graduate of Middlebury College. He's the son of the founder. If this is a $40 million project, 30, 3% of that is $12 million back in tax credits that they get to use in any, whatever, in any way they want. But they've got to get this thing up and running by December 31st, 2016, or those tax credits drop back to 10%. So they have, and I'm not saying it's good or bad, it's the situation, they have, they have placed money in this and they expect to get a lot of money back. There's a rush all over the country to get these solar installations in to meet those deadlines, to get those investment tax credits, because they drop off very seriously for commercial investors. They drop off to zero for individuals and residences unless the law is changed. So these guys are pushing, you know, and I'm sure that there is a certain amount of push on the politics of any, any public service board in any state. That's, that's one of the issues that I think we face.
Stuart, do we have a sense of how this project affects municipal or education taxes on the property?
No, I haven't done any of that research.
Stuart, I can answer that and talk to John this afternoon. And it is taxed, basically on the income approach for the municipal taxes. So basically, they're going to look at what the income is and set a value for that property based on that income. That's by statute. The education taxes, there's a certain dollar amount per kilowatt or whatever, for whatever the power generation measure is, that's, that's used to generate the education taxes. So they, it will generate, it will increase the grant list, if you will, based on the income approach of evaluation of that property.
Do we, do we know why they chose that particular site rather than, oh, the Johnson Control Site, which is industrial, for example, which would have fit into this, right? Anybody know why they?
I'll try.
We'll open it up to public comment now.
Please, go ahead.
Folks, just raise your hand and we'll call on you. Just please try and keep it to three minutes or so, so if we have a chance.
Quick answer to your question, it was very inexpensive land.
No.
And that's what's happening all the way up through Historic Seven. And that's the short part of it. You know, it faces the right leg, but they had to clear cut the entire 27 acres.
Rick, did you have any other comments you wanted to make on the, on the project? Or move on to somebody else?
Well, there's so much more that the town could be involved in. I mean, you talk about what can we do and what can we present? There's so much that can be presented to the Public Service Board on a number of different issues that the town should be involved in. One of them is, the very last photograph I received from EcoSolar was this one up here. And if you look at this.
Which one?
This one right here.
On the left.
This one right here. So this is if you're standing at the Welcome Center and this is looking this direction. So all this is solar fields that you're going to see. The shocking part of this photograph that just stunned me was the high tension lines.
So it's not coming.
Coming away from it?
Yes. This, this is coming up Willa Road. So Willa Road is going to have high tensions line, but all the way up to the middle of this, I think that this is the last ball. I'm not quite sure.
And they're going to have to clear cut the area for those high tension lines for access?
Well, it's part of it, but it goes along the highway. They're going to have to still cut land for it to put it in, but it's just a visual hazard of, you know, we were always so concerned about what the solar panels are going to do. It's everything. I mean, they shouldn't be allowed to put that type of power in. It should all go underground. And that's where the town should step in.
Well, Stuart, what authority do we have to suggest that, or would that have to happen with the PSB meeting?
We can, we can ask for that consideration.
Ask for it?
Yes. It's like any project, what Green Mountain Power and then they can see the PSB for them. Every time you propose underground power, it's an additional cost to the individuals putting in the power. And so they, they tend to resist that and except in most extreme cases where you can argue that it is absolutely essential, as Manchester was able to do with its roundabout. They were able to ask and receive, but I think there were federal dollars that actually went to the power company in order to do it.
And is that the case with this?
Yeah.
There's no federal, it's all state.
As far as I know, it's all private, I guess.
Yeah.
It is. Folks, just please, when you speak, just state your name for the record, Stuart.
Bill Christian. Are you aware that there's already dual high tension lines running right through the center of all of this? Which is, I'm sure, part of why they chose this site, because running high tension lines a long way is a major expense. They're right there and they're right through the middle of the hollow, right through Apple Hill, 3,000 feet of double high tension lines, 12 towers? I mean, that's already there, right through the middle of this. So another spur off of that to the solar panels and all of a sudden, it's just a major problem. I mean, they're, they're right through this whole neighborhood, just like the 27. And they've been there a long time.
This may not be a question that you can answer, or anybody here can answer, but could, could, instead of, you know, the construction of those high tension lines that you suggest, perhaps they could be tied in with what already exists?
They could, in my opinion, they could. I mean, I don't think that they're going to that high tension line. You're talking about the Velcro cord or?
Yeah.
That goes right through Apple Hill. I don't think they're going to.
Pretty sure they are. I think it's definitely where none. I think it's definitely where none.
I don't think that they are, but, you know, I would want to check that. But they could. I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, they could go through the center of this and get these out of, out of sight and go all the way up to and hook on to that corridor. That was, that was one of my suggestions to, to the developer. But the one thing is absolutely for sure that we mentioned earlier, is they're not going to go through any added specs and you have to really go to war with them. They do not want to put in any screening at all. It's not part of what they do. And that's where, that's where the whole thing began. If you, if they want to come in here and spend this kind of money, then they should put money into the town. They should screen it. And you should never have this. And the town can, the town can go ahead and maybe suggest, but they, they got to get up there and buck their chest up and say, this is something that we don't want.
Rick, you said that they've refused to, is that direct knowledge on your part that they've refused screening?
They said maybe it wasn't something that they considered. That's what they said maybe.
I read it somewhere in the, in the documents. I don't know where, but they were going to leave an existing buffer along the edge. And that's, that's already, I read that somewhere. They are not going to leave a buffer, they're going to go right to the property line? You're certain of that?
They go right to the property line. And one of my suggestions over here was that they, that they back up this whole field so they could put buffers in here. And they said that they couldn't. They had to leave that there.
They couldn't.
They couldn't, because they have contracts with the state and that they have a certain amount of solar array. So they really couldn't move anything around.
Very good.
The concern with this, and for the residents who were at the meetings early on, and I attended most everyone of the meetings, I was asked to. The developer never took at any of the first couple of meetings minutes, even taped any of the concerns, and there was probably at any given meeting, 30 questions from the residents on the different pieces, such as, you know, what were you going to buffer? The wind, the, the sound issues. And the developer would shake his head and we're going to deal with that. Well, we did the walk on the property with the public service and I brought up, and as did other residents, to say, what are your intentions of doing of the mitigation for the concerns that the residents have? And complete blank face, like it had never been discussed at any of the meetings. That is my concern, Ben. I don't believe we have been dealing clearly with honest brokers here with a real clear plan. And I want for this town to be protected and especially the residents that are immediately impacted, to be able to have the town weigh in on this project. This has been over a year process. We've gone to meetings, the hearings, the piece of legislation that was passed, though it is lukewarm because you could have had party status no matter what in the process along the way, but they did put where you could intervene. I would strongly suggest, if that is the route that the board takes, is that you intervene and it is done as quickly as tomorrow to put, to place cargo there. The hearing on Tuesday is a technical hearing at 2:30. An attorney from the town, if that is, if they would be able to, they can cross-examine and ask specific questions as, what is the plan going forward? There are pieces you can do. We may not be ready for that, and I know we're in the 13th hour, but I would strongly suggest that this board gets behind this, this project. And again, early on in the process, as was said, the Public Service Board probably, probably would have never taken up 27 acres as a whole. There would, there would have been no discussion. So the two projects being cut the way they are, but again, let us not fool ourselves. It is 27 continuous acres of clear cut.
That's right.
And again, no one has answered the question. We all want to be environmentally sound in where we are going forward. No one has looked at the carbon emissions footprint and what clear cutting 27 acres is actually going to do, I think will be going in the opposite direction of the intention the state and federal governments are wanting us to take. So there are a number of questions on the table here that I hope you will step up to play.
Well, I've made a motion here among our board members for the, to direct the town manager to intervene as soon as possible. So I need a second.
Well, let's finish the audience thing first.
This motion on the floor.
Well, hold on a second, please. Well, I didn't write it down as a motion, but if you're making a motion.
Can you hold, can you hold off for a second? Just let, give folks rest of the time and, is that okay?
Sure.
Mike?
I was at one of those meetings with the other people. Mary was there, Rick was there, and some of the other folks here. And afterwards, I talked with one of the PSB officials and they said our strongest point is if we want to stop the whole thing, it's because of the scenic view from the monument and the $7 million Welcome Center, that is federal money. So they're competing against themselves here. They put federal money into that Welcome Center. And as you look at that map, the proportion of it, my God, that's, and I saw that I didn't even realize. I don't think that map was available, Rick, was it, when we were doing this at the PSB?
No.
I mean, who in God's name in Bennington would want to see that if you're driving into it from the west? I mean, you know.
Can I just, if you don't, if it's all right, Mike?
Well, I want to finish it, but you go ahead. I want to finish.
But I think the intent of this photograph is to show that from the Welcome Center parking lot, this is what you're going to see, is the tree line.
No. That could be gone.
No, it won't be gone. Because here's Route 7 North ramp, this is all treeed, and then it drops in. And I think their intent here is to show that from the viewpoint at the Welcome Center, your project site is, is up here, all of this tree line will remain. Yes, will people be able to see it from various parts of the community? Yes, but I think their intent here is to show that you won't see it from the Welcome Center.
Like, are there any elevation drawings? Are there any elevation drawings with respect to what the visual impact will be? I mean, this aerial photo is one of the ugliest damn things that I've ever seen for, you know, the environment that we have all lived and grown up in.
I will say, and I'm going to jump in here just for a minute, the reason I was late coming to this meeting is because I was poring over the scenic, the site assessment for the scenic stuff, which was done as part of this application. And there, there are some drawings like that that you're talking about. I haven't seen them before. And they do depict that it would be visible. They, they, interestingly, don't depict that power line, but they do depict that there would be some screening. There's a pretty large chunk of land that is part of the agency of transportation, which is in the front, and so they show that as being, you know, partly screening what's up there. But I don't think that the, the report itself was as bad as some of them. Did not indicate as much of an impact as some of them do, but this is a very large area too. So I think, you know, we could spend more time going over that and it's probably worth saying, the select board hasn't really done that. You know, we haven't had a chance to do that. We should do that, but, but we, we don't have time to do that before Tuesday. You know, we don't have a chance to do that. We've had opportunities, they've given to us. It's been available, it's been public, but we haven't quite connected the dots. This process has been happening really fast and, I mean, over two years, but by, by the standards of these projects, I think it's been happening pretty fast. So we probably could have done better on that front, but we're catching it now and we still have time to do something about it.
All right. So my question for Stu, without the benefit of counsel, hear me for this. Stu, what to the best of your knowledge, could we have our town attorneys or attorney do to address the issue that Donald brought up?
Well, I think the best that we can do from a legal perspective is, is ask to intervene. The next best thing is what I would hope that would come out of the meeting tonight is a position of this board as to what it sees as the concerns and what it wants the PSB to address in its decision. And I know we're kind of stealing Mike Buffett's floor from him and perhaps he should.
We'll get back to you in just a minute.
But that, that's legally, the best we can do is intervene, have counsel.
And how would you define intervene?
Well, it's a, it's a legal term. Well, it's a, it's a legal term. It means counsel files a request for party status. And as I understand the new law, party status is automatic for municipalities. So that's not an issue. It would just be a matter of getting the filing done.
Okay. So by Tuesday, as I understand in conversations that I've had with Donald, is the deadline and prior to that, there has to be a set.
There are two attorneys in the office that tomorrow that can handle our request. So even though Rob is out of town, he's giving me two additional attorneys' names that we can contact depending on how we want to pursue this. And I will do what the board desires as far as intervention.
Can we, let's, let's get back to finish up the public comment. Anybody who wants to have a chance to speak? And then I think we can. Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
What in my opinion, what you need to do is get these two attorneys to intervene, like Stuart said, to intervene on the basis that you want to stop this project because of aesthetics. The monument, you will see this clearly. Another PSB official that was there afterwards said to me, she was up in the monument earlier that day. And she said, you're clearly going to be able to see this. And it's going to be a tragedy. And that is the biggest state historical spot that they come down to is Bennington, the Battle Monument. So I believe you could stop this project if we acted early enough. If the select board didn't drag their feet, went to the last thirteenth hour every time on these issues, we might not be in this spot. I would recommend you intervene and you ask to stop the project totally. That's what I would recommend.
Thank you. Sam, what do you think?
Sam, we don't even know where this solar array is going to drop and to what substation. What I'm led to believe is going to be at the Mill Substation, which is on Benmont Avenue. We don't know what the route is. And if you want to get a visual, Ponnell just recently did a solar array about two, three years ago from Barber's Pond all the way down to the racetrack. I know I'm preaching to the choir. But those are the type of poles that you're going to see. As far as where the power is going to go, we're not going to benefit whatsoever. It goes into a power pool. And each day, they decide where they're going to buy the available power. So Bennington will not benefit from lower utility prices.
Ma'am, did you want to speak?
I'm Diana Lizer. I just, I just really think that this process is broken. And I think part of, once, once the town intervenes, and I really hope that's what happens. And I think the town of Bennington deserves to know what this is going to look like. What, how is this going to affect us? But I, I think that by intervening, that perhaps that will send a message to other towns that they can, even if nothing, even if they don't stop the process, it's your, it's our right to have questions answered, to, to have every question that we ever want answered, answered, and to truly understand it. Because like Donald said, the process, the, the forms, the paperwork, the legalese is daunting. And, you know, it needs to be a process that everyone can understand or at least have some hope of understanding.
I've got to say one thing about what Mike said with respect in fairness to this board, we didn't drag their feet on this, Mike.
Most of us.
Wait a minute, I'm not done.
We're not going to.
I'm not going to. But the PSB, as I mentioned earlier, has been given carte blanche by the state to come in and do virtually what they please. You back me up on that, Mary? Yeah. So, you know, it's not, wait a minute, I'm not done. It's not a matter of us not doing due diligence. The power has virtually been taken away from local municipalities. So be fair.
Okay, good. Well, I don't, I don't want to get into a debate here. That's not what we're here for. You know, we're entitled to the opinion of course. But let's, let's, let's keep it civil and keep in mind while we're out here. Okay? I'm going to take, I'm sorry, I'll take Keith and then Peter the next.
Keith Whitcomb with Bennington Banner. The planning commission knew about this last year early. It looks like the select board is just finding out about this. Is that my understanding or why is this coming to you now?
I think the board heard about it at some different points in the past. But honestly, I think it kind of crept up on all of us and it did sneak up. And I myself wasn't aware the process was moving as quickly as it was. And I think my fellow board members are probably somewhat on the same page. So should we have probably been? Yes. I don't think we're mandated to be notified when these processes go forward by the PSB.
There's no obligation on the part of the PSB.
Well, we probably should.
We were notified and in fact, Peter Lawrence and a number of the Apple Hill development people came to us. Was that a year ago?
Yeah.
Because there were hearings held in August, I think it was August 7th, 2014. Very close to today's date. And I don't know whether that was on the first project or the second project. But this is, what the company did by breaking into new projects, and I'm not sure what the benefit was by doing that. It, I think it tended to break up the focus of the entire project and what it means. But certainly, as you indicated early on, Justin, regardless of what we think as individuals and how we might wish to react to this, our authority is, and I think it behooves us to get to a position that we want to take tonight. So I can pass that on to our attorneys tomorrow as well as to the Public Service Board. Because anything we send them tomorrow will be directed to the hearing officer and taken into consideration, whether we formally intervene or not. So the intervention issue still remains on the table. But I think, and I appreciate the folks here that are very concerned about the project. But if we're going to take a position, we, we really should do so. Try to be as clear and concise as we possibly can be. I, I disagree with Mike. I don't think we can stop the project based on aesthetics. I don't think that's going to happen. This is, this is a project that meets, except for perhaps in this area here, meets all of the requirements of even the new law that the legislature passed with regard to setbacks and screening. Fifty feet from any boundary line, at least a hundred feet from any travel play. Except for this corner, they're, they're clearly there. And so it's, you know, I think, I think what we can say is limited. The board could take a position, we want to stop the project. I don't think that position is going to hold water with the PSB. So I, I think it behooves us to, to take a position that is something that the PSB can address through the process and the hearing officer can address through the process that addresses the concerns, which are basically, I think, aesthetic concerns, wind and noise concerns. And those are the things that we ought to be really trying to focus on and talk about. Not, I don't think we can stop the project.
Peter?
As Stuart acknowledged, it was a little more than a year ago that I spoke at a select board meeting that was talking about the solar project on the east end. And I pointed out that here is this coming here. And I asked if the select board would pay attention to this because of the aesthetics issues, the visibility from the visitor's center, from the monument, all those. But I have to say, Jim Carroll's motion is exactly what I was hoping would come out of today's meeting, tonight's meeting, that the town would vote to intervene. I live in the Apple Hill neighborhood. And we got involved in this when the first phase of this began. But the way the law is currently structured, neighbors have the least say. Now, that's the way the legislation was written. And whether that was good policy, I know there are legislators who are looking at changing that, but that was the fact. All of our concerns, the developer could say, well, we really don't have to pay attention to you. And they could say that accurately. If the town gets involved, that's different. The town has a bigger say. And whether the, the position the town takes is to try to stop the project completely or to modify it so that the aesthetic concerns are developed, that's going to be a decision the town's going to need to make in consultation with your legal counsel. And your legal counsel, if you get Rob Wilmington involved, he's very knowledgeable and very good on these things. But the other thing, and so I'll say this so my wife doesn't have to. The developers say one thing at one time, depending on the audience, and they say something else at other times. And this whole thing about buffers and screening? Yeah, we were told there's going to be buffers and screening. And then when we were doing the site visit for the first part, the Chelsea Solar, which is the upper development, they're saying, well, no, we're going to cut down all these trees because they're going to, you know, block the sun on our solar panels. So no, there isn't going to be a meaningful buffer. On paper, there's a buffer. But, you know, I don't know what those little bushes, what does that do? So the town really needs to get involved in this and, and hold the developers' feet accountable.
Peter, I have a question for you. In your legal opinion, who, who has the greatest say? Are you saying that it's the municipality?
Much greater than the neighbors.
Okay. All right. Jay?
Yeah.
No, I'm not done.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's all right. With respect to the, the developers themselves and the, and the PSB, is anybody asking them for an agreement? With laying down setbacks and screening of any kind? Are they beholden to the state or the PSB in any way? And why the hell not?
They, they propose their development to the PSB. And so far, it's been sort of a fast track thing. The concerns the PSB looks at are, are pretty limited. I know other parts of the state, there are municipalities. Rutland has a major battle going on with solar developers there. Some of that's going to the Supreme Court, the Vermont Supreme Court. But that's also tremendously expensive. For the Apple Hill Neighborhood Association, we did negotiate a agreement, a memorandum of understanding that modified the worst aspects of what they were planning to do to our neighborhood. And that was because.
Was this legally binding in any way? Or did you just say, oh?
No, well, we, we feel it is. And we'll see what the Public Service Board's permit includes on the first project, the Chelsea Solar, which is the upper area of that. But again, the question was, Mike, that you said that this is such a big project. Well, the fiction is this is two separate projects.
That's right.
You can call it two if you want. It's, it's a monochymal lots in one place.
Right. This, this program, the speed program, you're not supposed to have a project that's bigger than 2.2.
Kilowatts?
Kilowatts, yes.
And how many is this?
This is more than four.
Two megawatts.
Each one is two.
Yeah, each one is.
They're separate.
They're separate projects. Same owners, different corporations, but the same principles, the Malone family. And the, they, once they're all built, there will be a fence separating them. And that's the fiction.
Which is pure malady, right?
Right. But that did go to the Vermont Supreme Court because the Public Service Board said they could only do one. They appealed it to the Vermont Supreme Court. And they said, under the statute as it then existed, they count as two separate entities. And they're entitled to be treated as two separate.
Peter, well, do you know for certain, but will in any way, those two collections of electricity be joined in any way? And therefore obviate any, you know?
Electricity will be going to the same power station, but the properties will be cut off by a fence. So there'd be no direct link between the properties.
Yeah, let me show you on the picture here. This is the first phase, the Chelsea Solar phase. This is the Apple Hill. It's all one property, the twenty-seven acres. Once, they have to build this first. Once that's built, they'll have a fence separating it from this one. And then this will be here. The power will be joined, but physically, there'll be a fence that, that ostensibly separates them. But in terms of the impact, in terms of the visibility and the aesthetics, you're looking at this entire area.
Power will go out from both, from both areas through one set of lines.
Right, down here to Willow Road.
And if I can, each system will have their own transformer set and will feed separately, but to the same, obviously, the same grid.
Are they two separate pieces of property?
No.
They're all one. So therefore, doesn't that make it all one project?
They're two separate LLCs. So there's one LLC, which is the Chelsea Solar. And then there's another LLC, which is the Apple Hill Solar. But they're both under this Alco Renewable, or Ecos Energy, which is the Vermont entity of the Alco Renewable Energy.
And frankly, they're probably two different LLCs because they have different funders and investors in each one, which shouldn't concern us at all.
Right.
Peter, could I ask you a question? Would they be allowed to help create between the fences for maintenance?
No. No, no. Part of the agreement with the Apple Hill Association was when they do their construction of this, the first phase, they'll come from Willow Road and not use with their heavy equipment and heavy trucks, the Apple Hill area at all. Once this is built, then along here, they'll have an access road for maintenance and then block off the road here. And they have to, again, they, they're supposed to keep them separate so that you don't drive through. Who monitors that? You know, that's a different story. But again, I think for the people, and I'll speak for myself and some other people in the neighborhood.
Not your wife, I hope.
We really, part of the problem was, was people are imposed to solar. But when we started dealing with the developers, we were getting all sorts of different stories. And there was, the first meeting was very hostile and we can do whatever we want. Next meeting was, okay, how can we accommodate you? Then when the site visit was done, walking around through here, their project manager was saying one thing, was contradicting what he had said in the public meeting about there being screening along here to buffer wind and noise and the visibility. You know, he was saying, no, we're not going to leave all those trees there. We're going to cut those down.
So it was a head fake?
So, and you know, and again, that's why if the town gets involved, the town has a lot more authority, a lot more ability to make sure they stay accountable to do what they say they're going to do.
Okay, well, Peter, you, what was the, the name of the, or the phrase that you used with the agreement or understanding?
A memorandum of understanding.
Okay. So that is not binding legally?
No, I think it is. I think it is.
But it's directional.
But it's how it's interpreted.
I think there's, there's two things. We, we specifically entered into a memorandum of understanding that the Apple Hill Association signed with the developer. Because I feel that that's a contract that's, if they don't do that, that the association can enforce that against them. That is also then became part of their application to the Public Service Board. Now, I expect that the Public Service Board will include that in its permit.
Are your pockets deeper than that?
Not, not even remotely.
Thank you, Peter. I want to, can we just, can we, just want to take it back down a little bit. I want to finish up. How many, can I see, show hands who else wants to speak that hasn't spoke yet? All right, it looks like we got three people over here. We're going to take these last three public comments and then we'll take it back to the board level to make some. Jeff?
Yeah, Jeff Grimshaw, not being an unjust citizen. I just want us to get on the right, on the same page of we can talk aesthetics and things like this, but I see this as real landscape blight. And there's some historical things that we can look at. In 1921, the city of New York built these two giant gas tanks for the good of the people, the Elmhurst gas tanks in Queens. They, they were impeded traffic. They were two 150-foot huge eye source. It took eighty years to get them out of Queens. They were finally imploded in 2001. In 1985, the city of Baltimore built a 150-foot incinerator stack. And to this day, they're still trying to figure out how to beautify it. So if this thing goes through and it's a blight, and my feeling is it will be a blight, we're going to be sitting around for God knows how many years figuring out how to mitigate and get rid of this thing.
Ma'am, did you want to speak?
Yes, I'm Eddie Lawrence. I've said most of it. The only thing I wanted to say is I was a resident at most of those meetings. And I do recall on the high tension wires that they have in that picture, there was a comment said that they needed to add additional high tension wires because what is currently going through our development could not accommodate the additional power that they needed to generate. So that is something that I do think you need to keep on.
Say that again.
That what is currently going through our development that he was commenting on, that they could tie into what is currently there. I do recall Chelsea commenting that they needed to, they were postponing the Apple Hill development project because they needed to put in the proposal for the addition of those high tension wires. high tension wires, because what is currently in there could not accommodate what they needed to generate. So I do believe that is something that should be addressed by the guys, because I do believe that those are necessary for the power that they are generating.
Tim, go ahead, and I'll take the gentleman behind him, and then we'll close the public floor. I just wanted some clarification, not that I'm on the board, but what's the sense of the residents of Apple Hill? Sounds like you would be for this if you got X, Y, and Z, an agreement to go along with the aesthetics and buffer. Is that what I'm hearing? Or you're... What's the... Well, I mean, it sounded like when Peter first got up, you were saying that we were, you know, lukewarm about it, we weren't doing jumping jacks, but if they met these obligations, we can live with it. Is that your position? Or are you, I just wanted to be clear so the board could be clear. What is it that you're asking for if they intervene with the Public Service Board to say, kill it? Or really push for the fact that we want X, Y, and Z to move forward and sort of accommodate...
Kill it.
Kill it. You're not from Apple Hill.
I'm going to move in.
Well, let me address that, or maybe Bill can. Apple Hill Association, you know, we can't act individual. We had a number of meetings at which this was discussed. Generally speaking, people were unhappy about the project, but also facing the reality, question was about how deep our pockets were, and what we could fight realistically and what we couldn't. So eventually, by a majority vote, although it was not unanimous, the Apple Hill Association voted to enter into the memorandum of understanding that got a number of concessions, which we felt worth. Protective of the neighborhood somewhat, certainly protected against the worst possibilities from what the developer was going to do. But the Apple Hill Association is a large number of people. How many families, Bill?
About 35.
About 35 families. So while no one was really happy about this, the level of opposition varied from, can we get something that minimizes the impact on the neighborhood, to can we stop this altogether?
And you came to the realization that the odds are, and I think I agree with Stu on this, that I think that train might have left the station. So now you're left with, what can we do to sort of bear...
So let me answer it this way. Personally, I felt that some compromise, getting the best we could, was what we wanted. There were clearly other people, including my wife, who felt that this should be stopped completely. Again, we don't have the pockets to do that, nor the neighbors like the Apple Hill Association have the legal standing, the way the statutes are written, to have much of an impact. You know, the standard that gets applied regarding aesthetics, regarding impact on the economy excludes people who live in the immediate vicinity. Now, that should be different, but that's the way the legislation is.
I think if you ask any member of the Apple Hill Homeowners Association, if they would rather have 27 acres of hardwood forest, or 27 acres of concrete posts, we would all vote for hardwood forest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it sounds like, you know, yeah. And I just want to be clear with that, because it sounds like there was sort of, you know, in the environment that we live in, you know, we have a portfolio that we're trying to be in as a state, trying to get, you know, 80 or 90 percent renewable energies, and you know, this is part of it. But it's always like, not in my backyard. But I just wanted to be clear where you guys stood, because it was sort of like, a little bit...
This is literally...
Yeah, that's... Folks, just one more thing, please.
I just have a question for Peter, because he had the floor. Can you make sure, can you detail for us, to the extent that you're comfortable doing so, what your MOU covers, so that if the board takes a position to try to strengthen that? What's the MOU?
That's a memorandum of understanding.
If we can second that in a sense, and perhaps take it a step further?
Initially, their plan was to take all their heavy equipment and trucks, and the construction of this, which would be about a six-month, four- to six-month process, would go through Apple Hill neighborhood, and would come through here, which would mean our roads would change. I mean, we're a, there's no, you can only get in and out of the Apple Hill neighborhood one way, from Home Lane. They were going to make a through road from here through that, which would dramatically change our neighborhood. They were going to come through here, build through here, and for that construction period, on our very quiet residential roads, there would be heavy equipment, heavy trucks coming through for that period of time. So they agreed that they would, during the construction, there would be no access through the Apple Hill Association. It would all come up through the Willow Road, through here. Then after it was constructed, the Apple Hill, that construction driveway that comes from Apple Hill would be blocked off. So there's no throughway through that. The only access they would use through here would be sort of leaving this, you can't, it's hard to tell here, there's a little grassy area, so they would put a, like a dirt driveway into this here, into this corner, for their access for maintenance, which would only be a few times a year. Some of the other things, and Bill, correct me if I'm missing anything, they would let us know who their contractors were, who their people were that were coming in, so that we would know that. When it's time to decommission this, the decommissioning would not go through Apple Hill. The decommissioning would then again go back out through Willow Road. They would never make a, tie these together from a road.
That's about it. That's the basic crux. That was important, man. A little few shrug on things.
There were some things that we were pushing for that we could not get from them was wind and noise studies. They said, their private studies, said that that's not going to be a problem, so too bad. One resident, Libby Harris, who's, is not here tonight, did not join in that and has intervened and is opposing the project, because her house, which is right here, her house and Jenna Nuschaper's property, which are right here, are going to be the most impacted by cutting down the trees. Already, there's a lot of wind that comes out that area whenever there's a storm. The common sense tells us that that's going to be increased. The noise from here, from the highway, will be increased. But again, going to the pockets thing, none of us had the money to hire the kind of experts who could do that kind of detailed study.
Gentlemen in the back here. I'm Martin Block, I'm a resident of Bennington, and I'm a lifelong environmental educator, and one-time selectman of a small town in Vermont. Back in the 70s, that town dealt with an incinerator location issue, some of the same issues as you're addressing now. I also witnessed the biomass public meetings that happened in Palma, some of the same issues with the PSB and municipality. No offense to Representative Tim, but it's suggesting some partiality when you're asking for the position of this particular group. You are acting for the municipality. That's a vital input, but I think focus should remain on what's good for the town Bennington environmentally, which includes the studies. I'm wondering to what extent the Vermont League of Citizens and Towns advises you as a municipality. This is not a new issue in the state of Vermont. There's been a two-year advance notice of next Tuesday. No offense to this board, but as an educator and former assistant coach and athlete, you look at game plans, you look at all the options, and as a debater, you look at the opposition to develop your own case, as Peter well knows. And I'm wondering if there can't be a game plan from this point forward for other issues that are going to come up in the town Bennington. You have to be ahead of the game. I'm not admonishing you, but I'm highly suggesting and urging that you develop a town plan for taking care of the town environmentally.
Sort of doing, yeah. I think the League of Citizens and Towns, we are a member of the League. They provide general policy recommendations, they provide assistance on a number of things that municipalities do. But on a case-by-case basis in a project such as this, the League would not necessarily step in, because ultimately, they will not represent us in a court or in front of a board. We have to look to local council for that assistance. On behalf of the town, we do have a very comprehensive town plan. One of the shortcomings is that our environmental policies, I think, deal in general with what would be best overall. And we would recognize that wind and solar power might be a benefit to the community generally. The problem we have here is that we now have a specific project that is creating concerns for the adjoining properties that might meet even our basic town plan requirements, but it still lacks sufficient depth or sufficient, I'm not sure where I'm looking for, to address the specific issues that are coming before us tonight. So I think it behooves this body to develop that direction tonight, to give us a direction that we can pursue in front of the Public Service Board with regard to the project and its implications for those who live around it, those who may view it. There are two sides to the issue on solar. I think we've heard a little bit of both tonight. Some people think solar projects are really wonderful things to look at. Other people do not. And I think it goes to how they're screened, how they're constructed, where they're located specifically with regard to residences, that really matter. And so we have to find a way, if we're going to essentially represent the concerns that this board sees for this particular project, to come up with some conditions that we think the community can live with, and that the developers will be forced to abide by.
We're going to take one final comment from Representative Morrissey, and we're going to take it back to the board level.
I just wanted to say, this isn't just about the neighborhood, and yes, you are immediately impacted. This is about the community, and while we're looking and going forward in the community on a very major project, whether people like it or the visual it or not, I think everyone here has said, energy policy is important. Solar, I think probably most of us in this room are in favor of, but it's how you do it and get it done. We are not the only town in the state of Vermont. SWAT in Vermont just had a meeting last night, and I believe their select board is going to be intervening as well. There's several other towns, and if we don't have a strong statement going forward, I think you're going to end up with a collaboration of towns all over the state in similar situations, so that the planning going forward will be done. You will have better answers, and you'll be able to know what for the future your town will be having. The other part I was going to also comment on with, in regards to the process, I do hope there will be a very strong statement going forward, and for most of the residences we've heard, that are not really wanting this project to go forward. Again, I will reiterate what I said in the beginning. The Public Service Board would not have taken up this project had it been done as the two contiguous pieces together, would not even be hearing the case. They divided this purposefully to do, but let us not be fooled. This is one contiguous 27-acre clear cut, and it's not going to be a great asset for the community, or for those residents.
Thanks, Mary. We'll take it back to the board now. If anyone wants to lead a discussion, or if anyone... I'd like to amend my motion to define intervention with respect to town council to have a fair hearing before the PSB, where the governing body of this town is heard, and our concerns and the citizens' concerns are heard, and...
Can I help out with language a little bit?
Please.
Only I didn't know this. 24 hours ago, I didn't know this, but so I, we want a motion to intervene. We want it put in tomorrow, and we would...
Motion to intervene to halt?
Motion to intervene, all we need to do is a motion to intervene for now. That's all we need to do.
You need to give a reason, right?
No, no, not this form. It goes in tomorrow.
Good.
We're on the docket at 2:30 on Tuesday, and our attorney shows up.
Where is it?
It's in monthly. Our attorney shows up, it costs the town a little something, we start spending money, you know, when we do this. But what it does allow is it allows the attorney to drill the applicant and the applicant's expert witnesses on specific issues, such as screening and, you know, the other plans that would have, that would affect the select...
The wording of the motion, wording of the motion could be, the select board instructs the town manager to engage town council or a suitable substitute, since Rob is on vacation, to intervene on the town's behalf.
I think he's written it down.
Jimmy, you made a motion to what, like, just read, you had a motion to what?
Let him finish it. What, you want to finish it, like?
Yeah, the select board instructs the town manager to engage town council or a suitable substitute to intervene on the town's behalf in this matter.
I think we need to be a little bit stronger. And so far, and let me, here me up. I want to include a fair hearing, a language of fair hearing, of the governing body which represents the citizens of the town. All right, let me finish, and we can, we can edit it later.
That's subjective, word, though.
I'll be together.
Michael, we're not having a discussion. Michael's made a motion. If there's a point for a second, we'll have a discussion. Is there anyone, does anyone even want to, want to second Michael's motion?
Would you reread it, please? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's a lie, you're...
But the select board direct the town manager to engage council, and town council is at all, so, to engage council to intervene before the PSB.
Does anyone want to second Michael's motion?
I'm sorry, I've got a problem with, you know, intervene, and what was the last part of the sentence?
Before the PSB.
I think there has to be a reason.
What I, no, there doesn't have to be a reason, but I would ask that the board indicate to me, so I can indicate to council, what your issues truly are, so that they can, in a sense, in their intervention, motion, indicate the concerns that this board is carrying.
The action is the intervention. The legal action that we would need to make to have some say in this matter would be to intervene.
So I have one concern about that, and this is not on top of them. This has to do with that motion. But, and I don't know how this plays out, but I do know that the motion to intervene is supposed to have seven-day warning period. We can't have the seven-day warning period. This is off of their public service website. It appears that maybe they'll accept it anyway.
Is there a deal process?
Especially, especially, especially since there's been this new legislation, which has given the town a standing. But this docket was submitted before that new legislation, so I'm not quite sure how that pans out. So if we do this motion to intervene, which I think we should, and I don't think we need to be any more specific than that, we need to get our, you know, just have our lawyer in the meeting. I think we also should take Stu up on the notion of submitting comments, so that even if the motion to intervene is denied, we still have our comments go in, and that we can hopefully have our strong comments considered. So it's kind of a bell and suspenders approach, but I think we should do both.
Well, there is, you know, what we're hearing is that there is inevitable damage on the environmental, safety, visual, and aesthetic values of this area.
That should be...
Get them a copy of this tape for this meeting.
That should be...
Okay, then, should be in the motion?
Yes.
The motion is?
Yes. I think it says a stronger statement.
What were the qualitative? May I, may I restate that, then? The select board directs the town manager to engage town council to intervene with the Public Service Board to halt the two solar projects. public service board to halt the two solar projects because of their inevitable damage on the, inevitable damage to the environmental, safety, visual, and aesthetic values of these natural and historical surroundings. Community.
Yes.
I certainly do. Yes, the A.S.P.
This is really wet, wet with it there.
Yeah. I bet you cover, I think, a lot of our concerns. Yes. And legal.
I, you know, I feel like I need to just say, and I don't know if this is baring my soul or not, but I feel like I'm part of the problem. Okay, so I maybe would like to be part of the solution too, but I'm part of the problem in that I was on the planning commission when we wrote the energy chapter. And I really believe in what that energy chapter says. And I really believe that it's important for us to take a strong stand for renewable energy. That's part of my DNA. And I also feel that pertaining to our conversation about town plans the other night, the select board rifling through that, that study about the impacts, they cited our town plan, you know, that that's how we can expect our town plan to get used. The PSB looks at town plans and they quote right in the visual thing that we say that we want to create and support programs and facilities that provide stable, affordable, clean, renewable sources of energy, including wood and other biomass, wind, water, hydroelectric, solar, and geothermal. Give strong consideration to the energy needs of the community when evaluating the environmental and economic effects of such programs and facilities.
But here's the...
I kept that waiting, but I do feel...
There is a headlong rush since this federal regulation became, I guess, law in 2006, awarding this incentive, this incentive tax credit, investment tax credits, there has been a 1,600% increase in solar installations in this country. The headlong, the headlong push here, I'm convinced, has to do with this damn deadline of December 31st, 2016. There's a short window for these people to make money. Now, I used to be one of those people. I used to be, I used to work in Wall Street. There's a short window for these people, let's say it's a $40 million in project, their cost basis is 40 million, they're going to get 12 million of that back in tax credits to spend, to use however they wish. So we're facing economic headlong pushes to make a lot of money quick time. And I think if, you know, if we were dealing with this after the law expired, you wouldn't see half the, half the impetus, if you will, to get these things done real quickly and real fast.
And it's quite, it's quite clear that not all projects are created equal. You know, majority of this board supported a project that was planned to go forward up on Barney Road for different reasons. It was an empty lot and it wasn't looking to be clear cut, it wasn't sitting on a ridge where everybody's going to see it right when they came into town. It had significantly less issues of all ground and it was going to clearly benefit the town of Bennington through money coming back and through a lease payment. That project didn't go forward. This, this project is significantly different and I think we can still have a town plan that supports renewable energies, but still allows us to make a decision at a municipal level, project by project, as to whether or not we think they benefit the community as a whole.
Jason, Justin makes a good point. Maybe it's we that have to add the prudence to the public service board's decision.
Well, I think that's right. And I think one of the things that's going on is that, you know, we, in this town, we sometimes think we're the only ones that have a problem. And that's just not true. So this is a problem that's happening all over the state and I think we were trying to get out in front of things by really adding an energy chapter to our town plan and really trying to think about how we could be doing energy more creatively. And it, and it, the wave kind of has broken over us a little bit. So what some towns are doing is, as Mary pointed out, is creating ordinances. And Tom had said that he's asked that an ordinance be created, which then gets referenced in the town plan. And I think the nice thing about that would be it would tell all future developers what we expect. So here are the rules of the road, we want these kind of setbacks, we want this kind of visual thing, we want this kind of wildlife stuff taken care of, we want you out of the prime ag soils, we, you know, we want this, this, and that. And right now, our town plan doesn't give that kind of guidance. We don't have an ordinance that gives that kind of guidance. It's not because we don't care about that stuff. We care very passionately about it. We just haven't quite gotten there yet and we're going to get there. No, we work really hard to try to keep up with this stuff. But, but I feel like in this particular situation, my opinion would be that I think we have, this has been a parcel that's been identified as being good for solar gain, not used for anything else. I'm not saying that it should go through, but it has a lot of the attributes that we would have been looking for when we were looking for a place to cite solar. And my biggest complaint is that it seems, the process seems to have been reckless, you know, reckless disregard for the neighbors, I think, number one. And, and community as a whole. You know, I think we had some opportunities that we missed, so we've got some culpability there. But, but it does feel like you guys really had a lot of trouble getting your voices heard and I think that's too bad. The other thing is that going forward, the select board will have the opportunity to weigh in on any of these things. And we should just make it standard course that we're going to weigh in on these big things when they come in. We're going to get, we're going to make a motion to intervene and we're going to get party status, unless it's, you know, unless there's some reason why it's really easy and we don't want to do it. But anyway, I would love to have us, you know, instruct for this motion to intervene, but I also would love to talk about why some of these things about screening, and maybe it's just because I'm a planner and I like to get down in the weeds, but I really would love to talk about, you know, wanting more robust visual buffers and I'd like to identify that we'd like the monument, welcome center, and that these things are visually screened as part of our recommendations to the...
I think Stor, I think Stor made a good point. If we have, if we actually have a motion to act, we do need to act first and then we can direct town, you know, town administration and town council what those specific pieces would be therein. So I think we need to make a decision, A, or the decision before us is A, are we going to act? If the answer to that is yes, then we can direct town council and administration to go forward there. Michael has made a motion. Does anybody, does anybody in the board want to second that motion?
Second.
And we'll open it up for discussion.
I want to just make one mention to add slightly to what Donald said with respect to, you know, how the town in the future handles things like this, and that is suggestions to our Montpelier delegation to tackle the PSB. Where did they get that, this carte blanche that allowed them to do this? And if they can do it here, they can do it anywhere in the state.
That is an issue that folks have tried to have balance in that discussion and they basically have been given pretty much full power on these issues.
Well, that wasn't done by an executive order, was it? That had to come through the legislature.
Part of it is executive.
Pretty old system, isn't it? It's a pretty old system, isn't it?
It was shoveling.
Well, let's not get into, that's not, you know, even, let's not get into, you know, it's been a longstanding policy and that's why we have an opportunity here to, as communities going forward in the state, to really see what we're planning for and what we're getting and having real answers for people. Because again, I agree with you, you want good policy as far as energy and that, but if you don't know what it is or what you're getting, or if even your citizens are going to benefit at the end of the day, what are we doing? And also by even looking at what our carbon footprints will be, the negative impact this project may have on it. A lot of questions.
Lots of questions.
All right, we've got a motion. Any other discussion on the board level of the motion?
Could I just say one more quick thing? Again, I'm hearing two different things here, but like Tim said, I'm hearing Don kind of saying, well, I'd like to be adding the buffers and whatever. I think you need a strong statement out of the gate, whether you add that in, in when you're doing the intervention, the other pieces. I don't think you want to water down out of the gate what you're putting forth and why you're intervening. Stay solid and strong.
Yeah, I agree. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Now with respect to Mary's question, and I mentioned it earlier, we need to be more specific rather than just, you know, talk about an intervention.
Well, at this point, the motion is to halt the two solar projects because inevitable damage to environmental, historical, safety, and visual aesthetics of the surroundings. I don't think you need to be more specific.
Okay.
As far as you can get.
Town council will go to this hearing.
Yeah.
But as far as anyone from...
I will send an email to the public service board, basically indicating the motion that was made tonight, that will also be forwarded to council. So the public service board will have the select board's position, council will then make a motion to intervene and pursue that motion. Probably have some discussions ultimately about, you know, what is the fallback position and...
All right.
Because I don't think the projects are going to...
Stu, my question for you though is that after this hearing, whatever the decision is, will we, as a governing body representing the people of Bennington, have a chance to talk to the PSB? No.
Well, that's what your attorney does. I mean, if you want to be at the hearing, you can, you can drive to Montpelier. You're not, I mean, unless you have something very technical to offer, I don't think, I don't think that necessarily benefits the process. Legal counsel can handle the legalese and the issues that are before the PSB and as Mary's already indicated, the legal counsel can cross-examine the technical witnesses that would be there with an eye to enforcing the motion that you've made, however realistic it is. And that's going to be council's position to halt the two projects.
But I would also strongly recommend that you find out what the process is going because the technical hearing, 2:30 Tuesday, there's also another hearing, I believe, on the 18th. That is a time that...
Tuesday is the 18th.
What am I saying, the 20th? I'm sorry. There's, I believe also, without looking at my notes, I think there's another hearing coming up after that with the, with the public service board. So you want to make sure what those timelines are so that things are going in timely for whatever the board decides to go for.
Can you get that timeline information tomorrow? So, or not, if you can.
Yeah, also, your attorney may very well be able to have Tuesday's hearing continued. If they ask to have it continued. I know the Chelsea Solar, those hearings got postponed a couple of times.
That would be the good direction.
Is there any other business in front of the board this evening? Bad away that we get. Anybody?
So...
I just want to make sure Stu read out the exact word.
Donald?
Well, I voted for that now, just now, because I do believe it's important to get our council in front of the public service boards. I, in my heart, I don't believe we're going to stop these projects. So that's, and I'm not sure we should stop these projects. I think we should fix these projects. And I'm not sure that sending that motion alone, if this is, if the motion to intervene is denied, do we have...
No, I don't, I don't think the, I think the new legislation gives us party status. Motion to intervene, however late, I don't think will be denied.
You don't?
No.
Is it stronger language if they do recommend?
Yes, it's stronger language. Even if the legislative had been changed, I don't think they would deny the town's motion to intervene.
I trust Rob and his staff to make sure that that motion gets before them.
And the fact that the motion to intervene comes while the process has already started, that doesn't prevent it. You can still do the motion to intervene and I think it's, I'd be amazed if they denied it. And I think that, whether the town would want to pursue it this far is a different thing, but I think that would be a fatal thing for them to do if that was appealed to the Vermont Supreme Court.
I think we can cross that, Brimstone, when we want to get there.
Yes. If I could, I'm sorry, gentlemen, but I think, Donald, you're leaning towards that, the secondary issues that we've talked about tonight. I can relay those to council so that they have that in their minds and in their heads. It won't necessarily be a part of the motion to intervene, but it will certainly, it will certainly understand that our, our main concerns are to perhaps improve the buffering from what is shown, to uphold the MOU that's already been signed. I agree to, to, to increase the setbacks from the property line beyond what the new legislation provides. Those kinds of things that I could talk about.
Although that's not the motion.
He's talking about a fallback position.
But that's what I'm concerned about is that...
If we're going to intervene, we're going to be in this.
To the end. We're talking about a fallback position for, you know, for our legal counsel to have one when they're, when they're at the, when they're at the hearing, okay? Is there any other, does any other board members have any other business in front of us right now?
Well, I'm just concerned when I, when I hear some of the things you're saying, Donald, I'm hearing sort of a wish to make me, to be accommodating when what we're trying to do is put a strong statement in front of the public service board. We can do accommodation later on at some point.
You guys are tougher than me, that's all.
There's no fixing this project. I mean, look at it.
There is no fixing it.
Look at it. You think anybody can fix that with a pine tree? Come on.
That's the view from the mind.
That's the view from the mind.
I think Donald's trying to be a little bit of a real...
He's just a nice guy.
Fix it by covering it.
Just trying to have a fallback position.
And off the record, there are differing opinions about whether or not this can be viewed from the mind yet. Because of the thickness of the walls and the narrowness of the slots, you won't see this whole project from the mind.
The PSB official told me she went up there that day and saw her. I didn't go up there and look at it. She told, when you go up there, you tell me.
We've gone all night here and we have got out of, got out of order. I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. So.
Now we can go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Stor.
Well, that concludes our special exclusive same-day coverage of the Bennington Town Meeting, the special meeting regarding the Apple Hill Solar Array. Now for BNN, I'm Jeff Grimshaw.
This is BNN, the Bennington News Network.